...that we tend to take for granted. We ask tonight as we enter this meeting that you bless this meeting, all the words and statements and communication that comes from this meeting, Father, we just ask that it go to the benefit of this community and you continue to bless and watch over the city of my pledge. I give you thanks and ask all these things in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge a little bit of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please, thank you very much. Clerk, would please call the roll.
Mr. Granby? Yes. Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Ms. Blankenship?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
All present.
All present. We begin at this time. Number one, on number four is approval correction of minutes for the prior meeting of September 18th, 2018. You have those, copy those meetings in your package. I'll make a motion when we accept them. Motion been made to accept these minutes as written. Is there a duly seconded? Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you have a like sign, those minutes have been received. This time we move into number five, the awards, presentations, and appointments. This time we're going to have a presentation of proclamation for Mr. Charlie Ray Howe. If you want to come forward, Charlie, and we'll do that presentation up here. Bring anybody with you who wants to.
Watch out when you say that.
That'd be almost the whole room.
Right along.
I'm afraid to come up here with you. You're not afraid. I've known this young man for many, many, many years. He might not want me to know that about him.
It don't matter.
I'm only thirty-six. How would I guess you were older than that?
Well, thank you.
Well, we've been out a long time. I mean, I've lived here like fifty-one years and it seems like I've known you fifty-one years, but I'm sure that I haven't. Anyway, we're honored tonight to do this for you as an official proclamation from the Office of the Mayor of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee. I'll present this to you. I'm going to read it for the benefit of the audience. Be it hereby known that whereas the citizens of the city of Mount Pleasant are proud of those individuals who bring personal pride, have a dedication to success, believe in family and spiritual values, and bring recognition to our city, and whereas Charlie Ray Howe, thirty-six, a lifetime resident of Mount Pleasant possesses these characteristics and is being recognized for his outstanding commitment to his community and accomplishment in receiving Emmy Award and Mid-America's National Academy of Television Arts and Science Emmy Awards for the inspirational video, "How Do You Handle Adversity." Whereas Charlie Ray has earned this award by using his racing career as a platform to spread inspiration, motivation, and awareness by racing for those who can't. His message has been displayed throughout community involvement at schools, media outlets, as well as local and national coverage, and it's an inspirational story. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant, its mayor and board of commissioners wish to join in honor of this outstanding individual for his accomplishments this time, now therefore I James L. Bailey, Jr., mayor of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, will hereby proclaim Tuesday, November the 20th, 2018, is Charlie Ray Howe Day and call upon all the citizens of Mount Pleasant to join us in recognizing Charlie Ray Howe for his accomplishments. Congratulations, but...
Appreciate it, Charlie. I appreciate it.
You get the distinct honor of being that, my last proclamation that I get to do. So, my turn ends next time.
Well, it's my first.
I say, may I?
That's what it is in your life.
As I say, the best of life.
That's right.
I want you people to come up here and let's get a picture.
I want to say thank you to everybody standing behind me, the community, you know, even people I don't know, you know. There's so many people I inspire that I have no clue on who I touch and who I involve. But I want to say thank you to everyone that has something to do with my whole program. So, and I really appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So, y'all come over and get a picture.
Yeah.
So...
I'll send Gavin around.
You can have me and my wife first.
Huh?
That's my wife, Anna.
Yeah, I shook her hand back. I think you had to be. She looks pretty cute.
I didn't want to do it. She's up there literally.
No, Mom, you get up there. Get up right next to baby.
Oh, my gosh. Pop a can.
You do your baby.
Everybody looking. They're putting our newsletter. Okay.
You want to get some?
Sure.
Guys, when we come up and get some up here, come on up here where you can get them good.
Katie needs to get up here.
Immortalize them in film.
He broke that couple of phones. Know that man.
He won't break it.
One, two.
Here, I want to step back. Jim, Charlie...
When you and me and Anna?
Mayor, Charlie Ray was one of those kids in my classroom.
Oh, really?
Came to visit.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know she wanted to whip your butt, but she didn't quite wrangle. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank y'all. Thank all of y'all.
I went online and watched it. It's quite, it's quite moving.
It really, it really takes my whole, I guess, the way I do everything, it just takes it, because a lot of these people here know me as the joking, the cut-out, I'm the cut-up guy. Even you know that, and you watch that video and it really, it makes a turn of aspect on how I do things.
Yeah.
You know, it makes you really look at life a lot different.
But it is very inspirational.
But I'm glad you brought Mount Pleasant to the map.
So, Charlie, you and Josh both have been inspirations to a lot of people.
I got to give Josh a lot of credit.
The two of you have been an inspiration to a lot of people in this community. I'm very proud of both of y'all.
Thanks very much.
Well, what you saying is future bump for your success.
No, I'm not.
That's what you saying.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. They took the ball and ran. They, they took the ball and they learned that. It's not, it's not what anybody else decides for you. It's your choices.
That's right.
And those two young men did that and made the best out of adversity in the ultimate.
I couldn't do it without him.
Very proud of it.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm not going to ask you that, because maybe Bill Clinton. Did they say something about your credit card? Yeah, well, I'm talking about why I go insurance, not to contact him about insurance. I don't think so. Okay. A little bit of these right here. I don't have that, copy that ordinance in this pack.
The dog park one?
Yeah.
There you go. Mayor.
You're welcome to this.
Big front, too.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Uh, we're going to look at first at ordinance number two zero one eight dash one zero two seven. It's a public hearing and a final reading from ordinance establishing a dog park within Howard Field Park and adopting rules and regulations regarding the same. You want to go with that, Cory?
Yes, Mayor, this is an ordinance, like you said, that establishes a dog park in Howard Field. It passed on first reading two months ago, and then we made a change in between the first reading and then last month to where we added an exclusion for guns in the parks except handguns that are allowed for permit carriers. And so, we made that change, and then last month y'all deferred it to this month for further research. Um, I know that we've looked at a lot of different comparable dog park rules around different, different places in this area, but also I know we've looked at different states as well, and we tried to include all the different rules that we could into this draft ordinance. I even looked at, um, Thompson Station has a dog park that I randomly came across this weekend and looked up, and all of its rules are included in our draft ordinance as well. So, any discussion, I guess?
Okay. If you all remember, this was my, I asked the motion to be made to defer that after this meeting.
Yeah.
I'm certainly a strong proponent of this, this dog park. I think it's a nice thing that we're going to have there, and our neighbors to the north would really like to have that grant also, so, and I'm sure they'll get one in the time to come. My concern, these, these are really good things, and Cory's done a lot of work on this. My conversation with Kate yesterday, uh, I'm pretty much at ease with it. I didn't want to, I wanted to make sure that as things will change, and we will have problems for it. There's no need to think you're not going to have problems. We don't have problems with this thing, even though we support it. Uh, that they could be, if it's a safety thing, that we can handle that internally without having to come back and modify the process at first. You know, if something happens over there, it's a learning curve, and we don't have the, we don't have a way to get all this information out to everybody because we don't have the paper. But, uh, we're going to have to place another seat of our britches for the first few weeks. And she assured me that we'd have somebody there, uh, as we opened the park up, that somebody volunteered or nothing. In fact, I'll go get some, but these people, I'm afraid, will misunderstand that it's not a dog sitting service. And if you don't take your dog over there and take it out of the car and leave it, stay with it, you, it's your responsibility. If your dog hurts a person or hurts another dog, it's your responsibility. It's not allowed to be up on Mount Pleasant. And we want this to be a very safe and really very proper thing for our city to have, and I think it will be, and I'm satisfied that now that, um, that we, I had that conversation with Kate, that, that we're all on the same page, so, I have no problem with, with following down. Well, if you're good with it, I'll make a motion and we approve. Okay. Motion been duly made and is seconded.
I'll second it.
Been duly seconded. Further discussion? Any more commissioners? Clerk, would please call and roll on this, please.
Yes. Ms. Granby?
Yes.
Ms. Blankenship?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes.
Five feet away, motion carries.
Okay. I fail to ask if anybody here, not to let you all have a public, did anybody here want to speak for or against this park? Public hearing, you can speak for and against it. Okay. The record show no one spoke for or against the park. Okay. Uh, number B, ordinance two zero one eight dash one zero two eight, public hearing, final reading, an order repealing and replacing Title 14, zoning and land use control, Chapter Two, zoning ordinance of Mount Pleasant Municipal Code. Cory?
This is the new proposed zoning ordinance that the planning commission has been working on for about a year now. It passed on first reading last month, and really it's just updating the entire zoning ordinance that is last updated in nineteen eighty-four. And the only change that was made in between first and second reading were, there was a small cell tower appendix that y'all had seen and discussed for first reading, but it was not formatted correctly. That has been formatted correctly, and it's in the link that you have on your tablet. And also, there was a small revision to the zoning map that was included in Appendix A in the, Appendix A of the zoning ordinance, and all that does is, um, show the, the proper city limits. There was some, some confusion over where the city limits were, and that tracks the map that was done by the county as well. So, those were the only two, and those, both of those changes were officially approved by the planning commission on eleven thirteen. So, it's been re-recommended to you for final passage in a public hearing today.
And here are your new, these are the latest and greatest. Before we vote, we'll do it the proper way this time. Does anyone here in the public have comments for or against this particular ordinance? Okay. The record show no one spoke for or against the ordinance. Also, before we vote, I want to personally thank Robert and his staff that's worked and the others here in the city hall that helped him do this. This is a monumentous task that's been completed here, and Robert and his staff has saved this city a lot of money that we didn't have to use on this. Most cities would have gone out and hired a consulting firm to have done this, and we frankly weren't in that position, and he burned the Bednait oil and got a lot of knowledge gained by doing it. So, it wasn't all a bad thing, but it was so overdue from Mount Pleasant, it just kind of got pushed aside, and I appreciate very much the things that the planning and zoning is so critical for the growth that we're going to have here. Any comments or if we don't call for them? I'd just like to thank Robert and his group as well, Will, who's been part of this. Uh, it's, it, I've said in our planning meetings, this gives us opportunity to look forward and not back now, so, that's what's going to be our priority. Right. So, with that said, I'll make a motion we accept. Okay. Motion been duly made and is seconded. Duly seconded. Further discussion among the commissioners? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you have a like sign, ordinance has passed, and thank you again. Um, item seven, monthly report from the mayor. I have delivered my long-awaited sidewalk thing. I'm sure everybody wants to get a copy of it, but Teresa's on vacation, so, I will have that presented to you at the, at the next meeting as a handout. Uh, it's a very lengthy report, and I learned a whole lot about Mount Pleasant I didn't know even though I've been here fifty-one years. I was on one street I've never been on in my life, and I got a real awakening.
A witness.
Great we saw.
I didn't know it was there.
I knew it was there, but I never hadn't been on it. But anyway, it didn't have sidewalks on it, so I don't know if it's a problem.
Oh.
I did miss that street for some reason. I didn't deliver medicine down, I guess, that's how I did a lot of my deliveries I didn't make today. But it's comprehensive. I know that we can't act on a lot of it, but I do have some things that can be done in the near future without costing much money, some, no money at all, and I do have some recommendations to start with as we can, and if we save the money from our refinancing and our grants and things, I hope we start ESCO camps here and start ESCO and sidewalks and street repairs. We'll get this light thing taken care of, so the commission has, has made some really good moves and make some of these things happen, and sidewalks are crucial. If you notice down on Third Avenue, this is a project, you can remember two years ago, one of the first meetings that we had, there was a, a group from the, um, Mount Pleasant Municipal Association here requesting that we do something about the dangerous situation with the children and the crosswalk up in front of the parks. That crosswalk was put up above Clark Avenue and should have been down on the other end. And so, we've visited with the state and state and federal government, moved at snail's pace, and it, even though it was a safety, well, a safety grant to do that with, it's taken all this length of time, and they brought the barrels last week, and I brought Johnny on spot yesterday, I think, and got ready and put a little fence up in front of the new doctor's house out there that's going to be coming to Mount Pleasant about a year. So, they'll start, get that done, and we can have a new, really great crosswalk for these young children and probably save somebody's lives. So, I'm glad that that, we're going to be accomplished here soon. And, uh, I'm sorry so long about doing the mayor's report, but that, so, he just took a long time. It was very burdensome. I want to, at this time, take an opportunity to flyer on the door. Uh, there'll be an ad in, in the herald on this Sunday, next Wednesday, Wednesday week, and then again the following Sunday. We'll bring a gentleman here whose name is Brent Nixon. I met this gentleman on the one and only cruise that I've been on in my life. I'm not someone who likes to listen to speakers a whole lot. Most of them are boring. Uh, and this gentleman just struck me. I actually went back to hear him speak. I heard him speak three times on, on that ship. Of course, he had a captive audience, but, uh, he's fantastic. He's a world-renowned naturalist. He knows about animals of so many countries. He's been on the Discovery Channel and National Geographic and all these things. He's had over, he's visited over six thousand schools, uh, seven hundred thousand people. Uh, he loves to go visit with, with schoolchildren, and we're, we're bringing him here. It's a cooperative effort between, um, the school system and, um, Dr. Julie Wood, the mayor, and Murray Airport community. We're bringing these people here, and they're going to do three presentations Monday and three presentations Tuesday for all of our three schools in Mount Pleasant. So, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh? That's the third, that's the third or fourth of December. Okay. The third and fourth. He also agreed to do a free program for, we're having to pay him pretty good to do that, but he would do one free on Tuesday night, December the fourth, at six P.M. at the Mount Pleasant Middle School, and it will be open to the public. It's five dollars for a, anyone over five years old, and those are in the file for it. He's fantastic. The three principals got together and chose the animals of Australia. You will, I guarantee you that he, he's just unbelievable guy, and, uh, we're so fortunate to have him, and talked to Harold, and he's been up there, said, you know, it's, um, you know, it's so seldom that we get a world-class speaker into our county, and he's come to Mount Pleasant to visit with our schoolchildren. We want our public, everybody's welcome to come over there. That auditorium seats four hundred people, so I hope that we can get word of mouth on them. We got to getting things out down here, because not everybody takes the herald bandit. And that's Tuesday, December the fourth and six P.M.? December the fourth. And schoolchildren are going to see it free on the third and fourth, and this public performance, five dollars on Tuesday night, December the fourth. It will last about an hour to an hour and a half, and he's absolutely fantastic. And I made the statement to the, to the MCP, if you're not satisfied with it, I'll pay the file out of my pocket to get the money back. He's that good, so, I'm just looking forward to that. And that's all that I really have, and, uh, unless some of y'all have some questions on me. Okay. Good. Thank you very much. Uh, number eight, the monthly financial budget report.
Good evening. October being the fourth month of the year, we're just starting to collect our property taxes. Of course, it, we only start like the last week of October, so you really don't see the effect of that until November. Um, that being said, it makes it so, we are still short one person, Miss Gloria has retired, and, uh, we're in the process of replacing that position, and, um, we have started interviewing, um, and we will continue that. We've got some good applicants, um, and so that process will continue in the next week, and hopefully we'll have somebody, um, before the end of the year in that position, depending on, of course, the person. Once we hire them, we have to give their two-week notice, so, we do realize, recognize that. And, um, we've also implemented the remaining of the changes in sanitation rates. Uh, we've had some questions, but luckily we've been able to answer them kind of on a case-by-case basis, um, or we're currently working on them. As reported last month, the testing of our payroll system is still ongoing, and, uh, they postponed that till January, which then that postponed the utility billing until after March, which considering the fact that we're going to have new staff coming in, that will probably be a good thing, um, and not being, throwing too much on our CSRs at two, at one time. And, uh, the total revenues, uh, for the city were right at the budgeted amount, um, and then the, uh, also the expenditures were right where they should be for this time of the year. Uh, the cash in the checking account totals of a little, almost one point three million. The, uh, the gas fund has a, a total of two point six million, of course, excluding the customer deposits. Um, and that's the, uh, the monthly report for October. You have any, am I got any questions?
Any questions? Anybody directing?
I see.
Okay. No further questions, or chair will entertain a motion, please.
Motion to accept the report presented.
Motion been duly made to accept this report and is seconded.
Seconded.
已经被 duly seconded. If there's further discussion, y'all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you have a like sign, that report has been accepted. So, I'm probably going to talk a little bit more nicer about, you know, ordinary with say things, but that's been one bright spot here that I've been so proud of, uh, coming into this job and being very apprehensive about the financial condition of Mount Pleasant. I was so pleased to find out what a good job that this budget department, financial department is doing to keep us afloat, and in fact, the main thing that was so surprising me is we still had a good credit rating. Our bills were all being paid despite the doom and gloom of that, you know, the failure out there on our lagoons, so, almost took Mount Pleasant into the lagoon. So, it's, uh, I'm very proud of what, what we heard here tonight and the boards we've had, and I appreciate the good job, honey, that you do on this too, so, thank you.
Dr. Snee, I have a lot of help.
Oh, you're doing it. Nobody can do about it themselves, but thank you so much.
Let me tell you, she runs a tight ship, though.
That's right. Well, you have to.
We get it in.
You have to when you're broke.
Well, that's why she stays afloat, though. When she says get a report in or, or a receipt, you get it in. I've been on the receiving end of that.
And I'm of no exception, too. I know, but it don't matter if you're commissioner or not, you get it in.
Monthly report from city manager, does she leave us any kind of written report or all the forty-five?
I think it's just a, a yelp. The monthly report, I think she has ready. She not? Oh, to be presented in the safety city.
Y'all have anything on, Cory, do you have anything from her perspective that you would have?
Uh, no.
I just noticed that y'all know how much I watch water. The year-over-year, we're up eleven percent on sales, same month.
Okay.
For the first time I can ever remember seeing it, we're over fifty percent. We're sixty-one point two five percent of what went through the plant actually got charged. I can remember when it was thirty-one and thirty-two percent. So, that's again, that's, to all the folks in the room that work for the city and the guys that are here, that's, that is, that's huge. I, you know, I hope that y'all... It is, it is really huge. To make the cost to operate that plant. Right. And now we're getting to activate that plant. Yes. And that's, that's... Another great bright star that the city has done here. Okay. Number ten, special reports from other city departments or committees of Apple. I don't know of any report that is presented at this time unless she's left something with you, if you have anything to make.
No.
Okay.
None available this time.
Okay. Okay. Item number eleven, new business. First one is A, ordinance two zero one eight dash one zero two nine, on our first reading, an order to amend the water and sewer rates and charges for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, as set forth in Schedule A, Section eighteen dash one two five of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code. You want to address this, Cory, honey?
Yes. So, this would be the first reading for an ordinance to change the water and sewer rates and charges. The city last updated these in, I think, July of two thousand and sixteen by ordinance. Um, there have been several proposed changes in this draft. Um, the first thing that happened is the water and sewer rates were rounded up to make them even numbers, um, and that, you know, were all less than a dollar, the rounding, that's for water and sewer. The main change would be for water and tap fees, and as you know, we did a water and sewer audit this year, and that's what we've been waiting on for a long time to consider this ordinance. But based on the audit report, the city has proposed numbers that would allow for growth and allow to accurately, or help, help with the collecting what it actually costs the city to put in these taps. And so, I've given you a outline of the changes that were made as far as the water taps. Um, it, it goes from different sizes of the water lines inside and outside the city, and then the next change would be, the previous ordinance just said that taps larger than two inches would be, um, let's see, what was, will be priced accordingly. We changed that language to charges for water meters larger than two inches shall be determined by the city manager. It just felt like that gave it a little bit more of direction of who would be making that call. And, um, Kate has told me that really with, with the taps larger than two inches, for lines larger than two inches, it really has to be on a case-by-case basis because it depends on where it is and what impact it will have and what kind of hole they're having to dig and so on and so forth. I think that discretion in that area is fine. Uh, the next thing is sewer tap fees. So, sewer tap fees were not currently in your ordinance at all. There was some older documentation that... There was some older documentation that said it was $1,358. So that's been the fee that was charged for residential, commercial, and industrial for sewer taps everywhere. So there has obviously been a recommendation to raise those significantly. And as you heard on Thursday, the study session, the, this doesn't exactly reflect the audit report because the audit suggestion would have been way higher than a number that the city could support. And let's see, the road boring fee, it stays the same. There is one added discretion here for the city manager to adjust tap fees in the event that it would benefit the city or more accurately reflect the cost of providing a service to the customer. There's been some situations in the recent past where instances came up where the city could benefit from making a, from making a decision to waive a little bit of fee would provide a bigger service to the city. And so Kate had asked to see if we could include some discretion for her instead of having to come back and change the ordinance every time. And then fire protection was raised also significantly. That's only for inside the city. And the last two changes were for fees and charges. And if you remember when you passed the gas ordinance a couple of months ago, we added a reconnection charge of $50. This is the same additional reconnection charge here, but we've added language that said only one $50 charge would be put to each person per bill. So if somebody, the way their bills are set up is water and sewer is on one bill. Sometimes water, sewer, and gas is all on one bill. So if you don't pay one, and if you don't pay water, all three of those services get disconnected. So to have them connected again, that you would only pay this one-time $50 fee. And the goal is to prevent people from just not paying it and delaying, you know. It was putting a, Loretta can explain this better, but I think it was putting a burden on the, on the city's systems when they were just having it cut off and not having to pay to have it reconnected, so.
Basically, we're financing people for months. And, but yet at the same time, we didn't think it feasible to charge $50 for water, $50 for sewer, you know, just one charge per bill. And that makes it simpler, you know. You have two bills, then you'd be subject to two $50 reconnect fees, just per bill.
But they're working on putting those all together.
Yeah. And any of those that we, we find, that originally the gas system was separate. And it being separate, the people at that time received separate bills. You had your water bill and your gas bill. Well, as people have come in, those bills are now together. But you still have a few that are out there that are still separated. So what our, our goal is on that is, if we see this coming up, then we can waive this. Normally, we charge a $25 fee to transfer from one account to the other. But since this is for the benefit of the city, our recommendation on that would be, we would to waive that $25 transfer fee in order to combine those accounts into one account instead of having separate.
It's to our benefit to do that.
It's to our benefit to do that.
And the last change was increasing the return check fee by $5. And that, if you remember, was previously done in the ordinance for utility collection policies. And all that was, was to reflect what the state law allowed. Apparently, it's costing way more than $30 to the city to.
To what?
To, to return a check. So this is, this is just making it as high as state law allows. And that, like I said, it's already in the, but just for trying to make everything the same throughout. We went ahead and made that change here as well. Every change that was made to this ordinance.
I just got one question. Of course, I had, I had missed the work session. Fire protection, I think I made just a second what that's encompassing.
Not here.
It takes a different.
Okay.
Are you talking about just the service line?
Increasing from 3,000, 3,000 to 8,000, only inside city limits. Now what, how's that charge levied and what's it charged for?
Well, fire service lines are different. When you install a fire service line, it's totally different than just.
You're talking about.
Supply line.
Okay.
It's for, it's for sprinklers, it's sort of a high-pressure line.
Take care of the valves and all the other hydrants and the whole thing?
It's a high-pressure line, yes, yes, ma'am. So it's much higher, it's, in essence, it's a higher-pressured line. So you're taking more pressure to supply that specific line, that tower. That's the reason that tower is typically higher in any city.
Does that mean more for a developer?
No.
No?
That'll be for a large commercial manufacturer.
Oh, okay.
Your residential developer.
Yeah, your residential developer won't ever see that cost to it. Because it's, you know, building code don't require residential sprinklers. That's only for your.
All right, so it's an interior, okay. I'm thinking, I was thinking outside.
Well, your fire supply line supplies the fire sprinkler system. This is the high-pressure line.
I did not know that was a question.
I have been known being too bashful. I don't mind asking.
Well, I was assuming it was something I was doing, a fire hydrant, the lines of, for development, so.
Okay. And this started, Jack, and do you have any questions about this?
The only thing, I just think, you know, it seemed like every time we turned around, we're increasing, you know, for the citizens or whatever. But, but at the same time, I know we have to do it, you know, in order to.
We have to do it.
Actually, sir, this would actually help your current residents as the majority of the changes that are being made are, are your developers and your builders that are gonna be coming in. Because it's not fair for your current residents to have to pay to have their new stuff installed.
If, if I may, you can look at it as an impact fee, because that's what it is. It's only going to be affecting development, okay? So your new construction is gonna pay a higher tap fee. But that offsets and helps lower costs per citizenry. So it has nothing to do with the existing service. It's new introduction service.
Except the people that's not already on it.
You want it?
Except the people that's not already on, which.
Right. If their subject failed or something.
If their subject failed, it would, yes, it would affect.
Right. And the bad would have to pay it.
But as far as the water supply, tap fees and stuff like that, most, a lot of municipalities, a lot of counties call those impact fees, because that's what it is. You're impacting the community and the citizenry, and you're levying the cost to developers and builders.
Cori, was this more in line with our neighbors than what we got the other day? Because what we got the other day was ridiculous.
The one I, you got the same list that I did, I think, of.
I mean, the one that we're voting on now. Is this more in line with what our neighbors have?
No.
You got the list of your neighbors, right?
I have requested this. I don't know if anybody else got it.
I think.
No, we all, we all got it.
I think that's everyone.
And my concern, as Commissioner Granberries was, and I was quite bungled about it, I wanted to make sure that, I, I think we've, we've got to do this. There's no question. I mean, it's. But my concern was, are we going to be hampering our own growth by going too high with some of this stuff?
Right.
Now. And the quick answer to that is, I still don't know. Because Lawrenceburg, this reported, found that Lawrenceburg's a thousand bucks on water or sewer. And we're talking about going to 2,000 and 3,000.
Which is what y'all was before now. So maybe they haven't done a corrected study yet. But I forget which cities and counties these have. I believe it was Columbia and Murray County that were going through.
Columbia and Springfield.
Okay. Going through the same process of trying to make sure that their sewer.
They're ordered.
But now here's the problem. It's a moving target. Mayor, as I told the young man that made the presentation, that the sewer numbers that he's proposed here aren't, aren't good numbers. It doesn't include $6 million of generator incurred debt. So it is what it is on that, I mean.
Looking for that sheet. I thought I had that sheet, but apparently.
I have one here. If you want a copy of it or anything.
He's got one, I think.
The city rates, the water and sewer rates have to accurately reflect the cost to the city. They have to be even for everyone. So I think the rationale for the, the new debt not being included is that the city hasn't actually taken that out yet. So it can't, it will, they'll have to, need to do a new audit study right after that. But as of right now, you can't look into future issues because you haven't spent it. So you know about it, but it can't be with the tablet yet.
But I think too, if you look on that list of where we are, and it's going this way, and the ones that are above us between here and Nashville reflect those higher rates, and the building is coming this way, so I mean, we're the next in line with it. I don't think we're totally out of line there. And when I was looking at this, I don't understand Lawrenceburg. I don't know how they're doing it in a thousand, a thousand, except that I know from things I've heard of Lawrenceburg, it's really wonderful.
Ah, if they do.
Financial shape, but.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a judgment on that as far as that, because we're not. Thing, but.
We got a little competition too.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot of competition of them going away. I guess if you were gonna go to Martin County, Lewisburg perhaps, but outside the city, which I think is interesting. You know, $2,500 outside the city, plus an additional 10-foot per service line. Not too bad on a, on a line of what we're at.
And like I said before, this is a way to kind of shift the business to newcomers. You know, so that you can prepare for infrastructure improvements and things later on that you would need. And just like the, the thing that's coming up next on the, on the agenda is looking for a water supply. You know, that's something that you need to be able to build, build some sort of fund that you could pay for that thing. So this is, this is looking for the future as well.
The people that are coming to come here, our competitors are primarily Columbia.
That's gonna pay it.
And the county. Well, the county has no sewer system, so that's, that's gonna increase that. The sewer is the, is the one that's concerning the lives, not the fossil, the fact that we were giving it away. And it's, sewer is a never-ending battle. It never ceases to increase. EPA puts regulations on every one year throughout sewer system. Go back to many years ago when we had a, a new plant built. It was gonna last for twenty years, then it didn't last two years. Went to secondary, tertiary treatment, so there'll be more things coming down the road with that. So I, I don't have a problem with the sewer thing at all. I had questioned early on. I thought we were too cheap on born-on-the-road. But it got it to $1,000, and we had worked with the city of Columbia and had, had shared a $1,500 tap with them. I mean, born-on-the-road for one of our customers. But we, I think we can live with these things if it gets to be a burden. But I think something has to be done, and it's addressed and passed. We've got to do it. It'd be added, it's gonna be added on to the homeowner, and the homeowner will either pay it or not pay it. I mean, that may, most of them probably may go to the, to the county. I don't know. It's like you guys, I'm not gonna hear, listen to it, or maybe listen to it, but I guess so.
Go ahead and sit there and listen to it.
It should have been done years ago, not to these levels, but I mean, we should have increased it. It should have been looked at over the years and every two, two to four, three, four years, it should have been adjusted. And it wasn't.
A lot of people move up to the county just to keep the, you know, city taxes.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And they're the very ones that I was sitting having breakfast with this morning that were fussing about the roads and that was, and city, and, but they.
Well, their answers always have a lot of shops over there. Well, I don't know where they shop, because there's not too many shops that used to be here thirty years ago.
But they drive, you know, they drive through town, and I understand that. Somehow, one way or the other, we have to, it doesn't get paid.
I mean, our roads are sort of bad, and I guess they are bad, but they could be a lot worse than what they are.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we do.
I make a motion that we accept the present is ordinance, the ordinance as presented with the rates.
Send a motion to accept the ordinance as presented. Is this second? Duly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I propose, like sign. Chair folks, aye. It's filed, no, that, that ordinance has, excuse me, get right in there. Thank you everyone. Okay. We go to the next one, please. Resolution 2018-44, a resolution authorized the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, execute and enter to revise HVAC DC engineering contract with Barge Design Solutions Incorporated to provide preliminary and final design, bidding, construction, administration, and construction field presentation with construction and wastewater treatment plan improvements.
This one is kind of a housecleaning resolution. So as you remember, several months ago, the city agreed to enter into a, a contract with Barge Wagner to, to do the engineering for the, the big USDA rural development wastewater projects. And the way that process works is because it's regulated by rural development, rural development has a standard contract. We can make certain changes with it, with the engineer. Y'all did a very good job, you know, negotiating that and getting, ensuring your limits were appropriate and changing some other language. And then after we make those changes, we have to send it back on to rural development for their stamp of approval. And just because of the timing of when that happened, when it got back to them, rural development said, you know, wait. We've made this other change to the master agreement. And now we want to add language that says anytime you're buying iron or steel, it has to be American. And so the changes are all throughout the contract, but that's, that's really all, the only additional change is that it's, it's just saying every time you buy steel, it's American-made. And instead of having an amendment to the contract we already signed, we've just put the contract back before you with the same language, with the proper rural development addition to it. Because also, if you remember with those contracts, you can't, all the markouts stay there. So it looks very busy and it just, it was gonna be really confusing to try to figure out which was the proper contract. So we ask that all together and re-submit it to you for approval consideration.
Questions?
I approve.
Move to the table. Is this second, please?
Second.
Duly seconded. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I propose, like sign, that Resolution 2018-44 is passing now. Item C, Resolution 2018-45, a resolution authorized the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, to execute and enter to a professional services agreement with Barge Design Solutions Incorporated to provide preliminary and final design, bidding, construction administration, and construction field presentation with 2018 Murray County CDVG Wastewater Treatment Improvement Project.
This one is similar to the last resolution. So as you know, the funding for the wastewater project is coming from three different places. It's coming from USDA rural development, and also the city was awarded the CDVG grant for Murray County and the one from the city. And because those are technically separate contracts, or separate grants, they will have separate engineering contracts and separate bidding, and they will be separate projects even though they're part of the whole. So the city CDVG is just included in the overall engineering agreement that you just approved. But the county CDVG funding project was actually carved out of the big project. And it has its own engineering contract, and that's what this is right here. But when Barge Wagner sent us the, the contract, we had several questions on it. We've sent that to them, and they have agreed to up the limits to where the insurable amount will be $625,000, which is the amount that the city will be receiving for this grant, and to make it to where you are paying, you pay as you go. So once part of the project is completed, then the city pays then instead of a lump sum right at the beginning. So those are the changes that they've already agreed to make. There was one more thing that they needed their attorneys to look at, and we do not have that back from them yet. So say all of that to say, this will need to be deferred to another month.
Make a motion, we defer to December then.
Second my motion.
I missed the motion, I
To defer, build system, defer that amendment.
Did we defer this resolution to December? They don't, they're still lacking information back from, Barge is attorney about whether or not they'll allow that in there. So until we get that, we can, we can approve it because it's kind of the same.
They, we asked for four changes. They've already
A number of changes, and as you did, brought that out to our attention, and that was very good that we
They just haven't gotten back
They've already agreed to them, like verbally, but they just haven't given us the new contract yet. You know, they, there was one
They don't have it in writing.
Yeah, there was one thing that, um
So they're not balking, or they just
Yeah, they just haven't got it to
They got it to
Because it's their
They're not somebody's desk.
Yeah, because it's their standard agreement, every time a change is made, it has to go to their legal department, and as you know, with us, we can be
Lawrence got like that money, huh?
Picky, and they get slow, so we are waiting for them. Also, Matthew's out of town, so I was wondering if that might have had some, he's not there to hound them.
Okay, the motion to defer has been due to made in second, further discussion. defer to the next meeting in December, I believe that'll be December the 18th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would like to sign this resolution, 2018-45, has been deferred to the next, whatever meeting. Item D, resolution 2018-46, a resolution revising the employee compensation plan with the city of Mount Pleasant for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019.
So I'm sure you remember, you recently passed this very similar ordinance, which just establishes the employee compensation plan, which is the, the minimum and maximum compensation for each employee. And you passed one for this fiscal year, but because of the loss of Gloria, because she retired, they would like to fill that position, but they are seeing a need for someone with a little more
Responsibility
Manager experience, I guess, and
Supervisor
Supervisory experience.
Lead.
And so that would be an additional employee role, which would have a different minimum and maximum. And so that's what this is, it's a revision to this employee compensation plan that you've already adopted.
It sets that to about the same as what the others in
Yeah, I looked it over pretty closely, and I mean, all that's, that's all this is doing is, is addressing that one particular. So I'll make a motion, we approve.
Okay, motion's been made to approve this.
Second.
Due to seconded, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would like to sign that resolution, 2018-46, has been approved. Item E, resolution 2018-47, a resolution to update the internal control policy.
If you remember, there's a couple of changes in the, in the internal control policy. First, it will also address what you just passed, and put that lead position in the internal controls that reflects that. And also, you voted on extending that, the contract to the auditors for additional two years, and so this will extend that period, maximum period that an auditor can be, an auditor for Mount Pleasant, from three consecutive years to five.
And that'll be going back?
Now, we've, they've already, this is, they're completing their third year.
Yeah, but what my point is, is once they're through, that'll be, that needs to go back to three years.
And we can, yeah, we can address
I mean, because we've talked about that fact here before, that we just don't, I mean, I don't want to say we got lassoed into this one, but we almost got lassoed into this one.
Yeah.
So we need to, we need to strongly look when this contract's up. We need to be strongly looking at, you set eyes. If it is a little more money, it's a little more money. I think we need to.
Five is that maximum I would ever
Yeah, absolutely.
Ever admit, ever say go, you know, that, that pushes the limit there.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve.
Yeah, motion made to approve this internal control figure, on, second?
No, second.
Due to seconded, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would like to sign that resolution, 2018-47, has been approved. Item F, approval of Heath, Coden, Davis Engineering Services proposal?
I can tell you what that was from meeting, from our meeting, is this is, this Heath, Coden, Davis Engineering, Corey mentioned it earlier, they're going to be looking for some alternative water sources for us. Mayor, you missed, I know you had to be out of town, but I told them all they need to do is go right over in Halo, there's all kinds of water source, you walk right there.
Yes, you did say that.
Well, all you got to do is go behind a library, and you can see it running four out of five minutes.
Yeah, that's, I think their fee's like $600, $900 or something, it's
Big.
Yeah, I can't remember what it is.
If this is approved, there'll be a budget amendment in January, right?
But I think it's, I mean, the last thing we want to do is not have water, and if you, we've got to get ahead of it.
The water is absolutely essential growth of this county, and we sit on that rear seat in this county for, I know, the 12 years that I was standing there, we failed to get things done, they took our dam away from us, and EPA thanked them, you know, for the good job they did of running our economy
Yeah.
Running our water supply, recreational uses, but if we don't find a, some alternative source, this is going to be hard to do. Even this town, no bigger than this, and our neighbors to the north, Williamson County, they have a water problem that
They got serious problems.
You didn't know they had any problems. They got a serio, yeah, they're very serious, because they are actually having to get their Harpeth River is going to thing. And so I, I would definitely be in support of this, and, so, it's going to happen someday.
Yep.
And Duck River Agency has worked on this problem for 12 years, they have a solution. And then I noticed our newly-elected state representative, he has the same solution, so, to be to go back and work on that dam, but the dam's not going, it's not going to happen. There's too many environmentalists to allow that to happen.
Too much water in the Breach Canal, is what I'm saying.
It is, and Duck River Agency's report is a couple of different proposals, pipe it all the way to Tennessee River, and the other was to build a new water treatment plant, give me another intake plant down around Williamson, where there's much more water, and then pipe it
Pipe it all
To Columbia's treatment plant. And so something's going to happen, so we would probably want to, I would say, you probably want to make sure that, that the engineering firm
Knows what
Knows what the city of Columbia is going to do, and what Duck River Agency is proposing. Because you can't go out here and find these springs anymore, they're about all gone, or they polluted.
Right.
And you also, I think you need to look at, if you go forward, you need to look at the contract that we have with the city of Columbia, to buy water from them, and the valve is up at about where Fred lived, his property, that was done many, many years ago.
Remember?
Got a lot of criticism for that. They told me they could taste that old Columbia water, and I was wanting to be down there because I grew up in Columbia, so that's, but anyway, it's, it saved, it saved Mount Pleasant a lot of public embarrassment a couple of years ago when the water tank failed out there on the Hoover Mission Road. So it's a good thing, look at, maybe increasing that contract where we can get more water in emergency situations, to go along, get them to look at that. I'm not sure where that contract is here, I don't know where you can put your hands on it, because it was done many, many years ago. Columbia, I'm sure Columbia's got a copy of that. Okay.
Sure we can search.
Okay. Do we have a motion to do this? Make a motion. Motion's been made to accomplish this engineering proposal, is it seconded? Due to seconded? Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Has been approved unanimously. Item G, approval of Eagle Scout project in Veterans Park.
This, I can't remember his name, but the Eagle Scout that came and presented to you on Thursday, he had proposed
Corey Corbin.
Gray Corbin.
Dr. Corbin.
Proposed to do some, do some work in Veterans Park as part of the Eagle Scout project. He, this is not to approve money, this is just to allow him to do the work in the park at this time, that he's proposing.
I think that at some point in time, the city ought to consider maybe a donation. I'm not talking about a lot of money.
Traditionally, those scouts have not gotten money from the water company.
They have not?
They have not. They raise donations. That's part of their project, is learning how to raise the donations, and they've gotten from different things. But Eagle Scouts have done fantastic things in our county.
Yes.
Calipads at our fire halls have been done by, by them, and bank bowls and different things, and some pretty elaborate things.
And that corner needs cleaned up.
Yeah, it certainly does. Okay, let's, we have a handout on that. I think this young man is a member of the troop here in Mount Pleasant, isn't he?
He is, and he did a wonderful presentation.
He really did.
He did a very good presentation.
He's mayor, he's a troop 154.
Which is one Thomas.
Okay, Chair, let's hand a motion, please.
Make a motion that we, uh, Mr. Gray Corbin to move forward with this project, Veterans Park.
Due to seconded?
Second.
In further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would like to sign this. Item 12, comments from citizens, do we have any signed up, chief?
No, nobody signed up.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chief?
Anything you want to say?
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, and happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.
And I believe that, I heard downstairs that our employees got a turkey this time.
Yes.
Apparently bringing back something we used to do back in the dark ages. We used to give a turkey or a ham, and then they got waited in one, the turkey turned into $125. Motion made for adjournment, due to seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
And remember, city hall's closed Thursday and Friday.
Man, you all right?
What about chief?
How you doing?